All right, it's seven o'clock on May fifteenth, 2018. I'm gonna call the zoning board of adjustment into session for a special meeting. Purpose of the meeting tonight is to hear a request for variance to allow a carport to encroach nine feet into the required front yard setback at 505 Brandywine Drive. And I believe there's also a request for a special exception for the same structure on the same property. Let me take a minute to explain the procedure if there are any of you who are not familiar. The procedure that we'll take is first we'll hear from the city representative to give us a little history of the request and why the city denied it. Second, the petitioner or petitioner's representative may take the podium and tell us why they think that we should approve their request. Then we will have public comments from any one of the public neighbors or anyone else who wishes to speak to give statements either for or against the request. After those comments are made, we're gonna close the public input and we won't hear anything else from either the public or the applicant unless you're asked questions by the board members, which will be quite likely. We may very well ask questions and you'll have the opportunity to speak again. By law, a supermajority vote is required to approve these applications. That means the applicant needs to get four out of five votes to approve the application. Even a majority of three will not work as an approval. If the applicant is not satisfied with the decision that we make tonight, the only avenue they have to appeal that is to file a lawsuit in the county court where the property is located. There's a very short deadline for the appeal. I believe it's ten days, but if you're considering an appeal, you probably should consult with a lawyer because there are some technicalities and some deadlines you'll need to be careful of. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The city keeps records, including audio and video recordings of what's happening tonight. So we will ask anyone who is speaking to be sworn in to tell the truth, just like you were in a court of law. We will also ask that anyone who's speaking, please come to the podium here so that the microphones can pick up what is happening so we'll have a clean record. So if anyone in the future wants to look back and see what went on, they'll be able to do that. So first I'll ask anyone who intends to speak before the board tonight, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do each of you swear or affirm to tell the truth and the whole truth in your testimony before the board this evening? Thank you. Is that an affirmative, sir? All right. We'll hear from the city representative then. Let's, can you please give us a brief history of this application?
Good evening. My name's Brian Rowan. I'm the building official. I don't know if I can do a brief history. We can do a history of this one. We've been dealing with this one for a while. In October twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-three, there was a variance that was applied for to the ZBOA to encroach on this property, to encroach the front bill line by twenty feet. It was denied at that time. There was a, following May twenty-third of nineteen ninety-five, there was a ZBO, a variance request to encroach the front bill line by twelve feet. That was denied at that time as well. March twenty-fifteen, the building department received a demo permit for this address. Shortly after that, it was determined that they were exceeding their permit and we required another building permit application. We received one March thirteenth of twenty fifteen for a building application. Included on that was a list of items included in that was repair of the carport. There was an inspection performed in May, I'm sorry, April second of twenty fifteen for a cover inspection on that. It was deemed that they had dramatically changed and altered beyond what the permit application was, and we requested a site plan. We received a survey of the property in September of twenty fifteen, and that was denied. After that, there was an application for a variance to the ZBOA for an encroachment of nine feet. At that time, it was denied. We were not able to come to any sort of agreement. We tried to get the structure removed. The structure was not removed. We've issued thirty-six citations on this structure. They've come back in and applied for another variance on that. So currently, we have the thirty-six citations that we are working towards to try and get resolution on them.
Okay. All right, see, representative for the applicant wish to speak?
Thank you to everyone. My name is Sebastian Filgera here for the applicant. I would like to begin by just retracing a little bit of the history here. What's interesting is that the city shows that it was denied in nineteen ninety-three and then again in nineteen ninety-five, yet there are some individuals that were on the board back at that time and that even testified the last time, and even a comment from a board member themselves from the last meeting, that actually recalled it being approved. In fact, the concern and the memory there was that, and these are all in the previously recorded video minutes, that originally there was a request for it to be approved. It was denied because it was too long, and the request was to shorten it and then it would be approved. It was shortened, and then those board members and even members of the public neighbors recall that it then was approved. So I'm a little bit, I'm not sure where, other than twenty-five years ago is a decent amount of time in city history for maybe some records or some memories to be misplaced. But I do think it is interesting nonetheless and an important point that the structure was built back then. This is not a new structure that was built. This was a carport structure that was built back then. And so for twenty-five years, there has been no citation, no request by the city to demolish, nothing was done. This isn't something that just popped up last year. Once again, twenty-five years ago, this was built. Now, if it's the city's position that it was denied and it never should have been built in the first place, well, then that's something that should have been, quite frankly, rectified at that time by allowing it to go on twenty-five years and pass through a new owner's hands, actually several owners' hands. Ms. Scrubs here, Ms. Otterberg, as the most recent purchaser, she's purchased a structure that, for all intents and purposes, was believed to be up to code and up to any variance granted by the city previously, because for twenty-five years, nothing was done to have this structure removed. So I think in one sense, that's almost a tacit approval by the city that it should remain. Fast forward to Ms. Otterberg asking for some other remodeling on her property. She hired a contractor. Building permits were applied for. At the last meeting, the building official made a comment in a statement that is reflected in the minutes, that was something to the effect of, well, the permits were approved, there was gonna be a permit approved and issued, there was some concerns or some questions, and the builder that applied for the permit never came to pick them up. We requested copies of those permits, but we were told that they were not kept after a certain period of time. The issue with that is that they may have been approved had it just been picked up or those issues addressed at that time. Ms. Otterberg did everything by asking for the permits. She hired a contractor. Unfortunately, that contractor then actually did not complete some items at her home and caused some issues, so there may have been some issues there, but she took all the right steps to have everything approved properly. This wasn't something that she just did out of the blue. Additionally, from the pictures and from everything that was previously submitted, once again, this is not a new structure. What she did was she took a structure that was twenty-five years old and updated it so that it would look nice, be safer, so it wouldn't fall on a vehicle, a child, or an individual that's visiting her home, or even one of her family members. It was updated and remodeled is really more an accurate word, so that it would be updated safety-wise and aesthetically to match the rest of the building in the house. This was not a new structure that was built. This is not something where there was no carport from before, and all of a sudden there's a carport. This carport has been there for twenty-five years, and we have not only her, but we have other members of the public neighbors that can attest to all of that. For twenty-five years, it was there. So it wasn't until she applied for this other permit for other parts of her house that all of a sudden now she's being told that she has to demolish the structure that has been there for twenty-five years, when she is actually the second purchaser subsequent to when it was originally built twenty-five years ago. So she bought this home, city of Friendswood, with the carport in existence that has been there for many years. The public members that we have here will most likely testify that, once again, it's an improvement, it's a safety improvement, it's an aesthetic improvement that adds value to the community, to the neighborhood, to the home itself. And it goes by all of those issues to improve the quality. And it's in the spirit of what these ordinances are, which is to improve the neighborhood, improve the livelihood, improve the property of this city. I keep harping back on the twenty-five years because that's pretty significant in the sense that nothing was done, and it was there for twenty-five years, and she did not add something new. So to say that she is all of a sudden encroaching now or doing something now, I feel it's respectfully misleading in the sense that this has been there for twenty-five years. And as the gentleman pointed out concerning these thirty-six citations, I think I also have to point out, I think that's a little ridiculous. She has a structure. If a building official came, sought that there was an issue, issued one citation, and should have moved on. To have someone and have that addressed through the process, to have someone come out every week and issue a new citation when it's a pending matter, I think is a waste of government resources and time, and I think it's a little offensive. You're innocent until proven guilty, and to keep going at that is really ridiculous. This isn't someone who was speeding and caught going through the same speed trap every single day or anything like that. It's a constant, almost harassment. And I say that fairly strongly because she did everything right. She hired someone, had a permit applied for, went through the building officials. She bought this home that's had this carport for twenty-five years. She made it nicer, made it approved, made it, made an improvement to the home. But once again, this is not a new structure. She did not go and build a carport that was not in previous existence. She did not go and take a carport and enlarge it or make it different subsequent to what it was before. So when we're looking at the city and what we're requesting, we're requesting both a variance and then the alternative, also a special exception, to go to the spirit of these ordinances and the city ordinances. So I ask this board, because these are the issues that you're gonna have to consider, is to grant this variance, you have to determine that the grant will not be contrary to the public interest. Let's ask it. How is it contrary to the public interest to allow a carport that's been there for twenty-five years, two owners ago, continue? How is that contrary to the public interest? I think you'll find from the testimony that it's actually in the public interest to have a nicer carport, a facility there that adds value to the property values, to the structure, to the niceness of the community. Special conditions peculiar to the property involved. This property, front door, and this may go back to the twenty-five years ago, back in nineteen ninety-three, the issue, the front door in the front of the property is at the twenty-five foot setback. So inherit in the property itself, you cannot have anything past that line, right at the front door. So this property itself does not lend itself to how it's already structured to have something else built beyond that twenty-five foot setback. Enforcement resulted in unnecessary hardship for the applicant. This applicant has already spent money, has already made the structure nicer. Once again, it's not, there was no enlargement of the structure. The structure is exactly what it was and what it has been for twenty-five years. Asking the applicant to tear this down would be a hardship because now she doesn't have, she'll, she'll be out the money expended, which is significant. She'll also no longer have a carport. She does not have a garage because of the other area that has been remodeled in the home. And she bought this, she bought this property with a carport already on it that's been there for twenty-five years. She's the, not the first, but the second subsequent buyer. So to say now, you spent all this money to purchase this home in Friendswood that had this structure, and it's been there for twenty-five years, and all of a sudden now you have to tear it down, that is a significant hardship. Anybody comes to your home and says, now I need you to tear this down, even though it's been there for twenty-five years, that'd be a significant hardship. You thought you had a garage, a carport, now you no longer have that, that'd be a problem. Guess what? You gotta tear out your living room or this other bedroom. That'd be a hardship for most people. The grant would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance as well because the ordinance is meant to safeguard the community, but it's also meant to add positive value to the community and all the homes. Once again, you'll hear from the, from other folks in the area that will further supplement that testimony to say that it adds value to this. And then finally, the, the grant will ensure that substantial justice will be done. And it's a little bit of that argument in fairness and justice that, once again, this has been there for twenty-five years. This is not a brand-new structure that she just decided one day, let me go out and build it. It's been there for twenty-five years. She made it aesthetically nicer, improved the safety because the one that was there for twenty-five years, there was some safety concerns, and it's much better than it was before. It's not larger. It didn't turn into a, from a one-story to a five-story structure, no. And to say that you bought this home thinking it had these qualities, and it's been in existence for all these years, and now you have to demolish part of it, that's not justice. That's not in the spirit of this ordinance. That's not in the spirit of what, what this community should be doing. And if we wanna talk a special exception, you know, this is a small exception that you would be granting. Something that's been there once again for twenty-five years. It's been part of the community. The neighborhood and the neighborhood, the neighbors will testify that this adds value. This is a positive improvement. The spirit of the code will be met, and there is no detriment to the neighbors. The neighbors will say, this looks nice. I like the structure. It adds value. It's much, she, she remodeled it to make it much nicer than how it was. And once again, the remodeling is aesthetic, and it's structurally for the safety of the structure. It is not a new structure that's built, and it's not an enlargement. She did not take something that needed a nine-foot setback and is now asking for a fifteen-foot setback or anything like, or a three, no, any other encroachment. I'm sorry, I mean encroachment. It's the exact same structure as before. So when you go through all of these issues, and if we go to what the board must determine for exceptions, is this an appropriate use of the land? I would argue yes. An appropriate use for the land is to have a carport or a garage. I think most people nowadays would say that's fair to have that in your home, especially when you buy a home that's been, that's had this structure there for twenty-five years. It would be fair to have a carport or a garage. Asking her to remove that and take away, would take away value. If any one of you were going out to buy a home tomorrow, and it didn't have a carport or garage, I think most people would say that lowers the value. That lowers the property value. And if that lowers that property value, it certainly affects the comparables in that same neighborhood. Does it affect street congestion, traffic flow, or fire access? No, it doesn't do that. Is it off the street? No, it's in, it's in the residence area, so it doesn't affect that. Does it affect noise or odors? No. Utility location? Doesn't affect that. Do we have objections from surrounding property owners? I think you'll find from the surrounding property owners that they actually want this structure there. They want it kept. Is there a benefit to the applicant and no detriment to the surrounding neighbors? Yes. She has the home that she purchased. She purchased a home with the carport. She invested money to make it safer, make it look nicer. Asking her to tear it down would be a detriment. And would the spirit of the code be met? Yes. Once again, I think the spirit of the code is to provide for safety of the community, to provide for values at a certain standard. And this doesn't deviate from that. This improves the neighborhood and improves the area. It has been for many years. In fact, for twenty-five years, there was a structure there that was improving the area. It became dilapidated over the course of several owners. She improved it aesthetically, structurally, for safety reasons, and it's improvement for everyone involved. For those reasons, I respectfully ask that primarily a variance be granted, and if not alternatively, that a special exemption be granted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any members of the public who want to be heard? Yes, sir. Step to the podium, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kerry Haskell. I live at 506 Brandywine Drive. I have since nineteen eighty-two, and which is right across the street, or right across the street from the property that we're discussing. I was good friends with John Robinson and Ophelia Robinson, the previous owners that actually built or had the, the structure built. John and I served on the Property Owners Association Board and, back in those days, and other neighbors were on the board, and I was at that meeting of May. And, oh, and my, my purpose for speaking is, is that you would reconsider your previous votes and allow this variance, for the structure to stay as is. But like I said, I was at that meeting on the, in May of nineteen ninety-five. I know it was a long time ago, but, and my recollection of that meeting was, the carport would stay if we moved it back a little bit, and John had a builder come out, move it back, and everything was fine. So by keeping the, the structure as is, it is a vast improvement to our neighborhood. It'd be nice if the other structures in the neighborhood, I remember last board meeting we were here, there was some question of other carports in the neighborhood, and there are several. And if those several were as nice as this one is, our property values would increase. So I, it's, it's very aesthetically pleasing. It's my office window, my home office, I can look right out. It's, it's very nice to look at. It's, it's not offensive at all. It's, it's totally the opposite. So I, I don't know what else to say other than please reconsider for all the, you know, all the, reconsider with all the information that's been brought up today and that we can keep the structure.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Todd Lay. I actually, at this time, do live in the residence at 505. We did make the choice to move to 505 Brandywine after the hurricane, of course. We lived in Quaker's Landing, and our house was destroyed. And we did look at several homes to try to find one that was suitable, I guess, to where we did live. But we luckily came across the home of Ms. Otterberg, and one of the things that did attract us was not just the carport, but in the back, there's a nice patio cover, I guess, as well. And as this gentleman did state, if it didn't have the carport, there's, you know, the, they did, when they did upgrade the home, of course, they did a fantastic job on the inside as well. And the garage is now part of a bedroom. But if it didn't have the carport, I, I really wouldn't wanna live there, because there would be nothing to protect my vehicles. So as she's stating, and this other gentleman too, I think the carport should stay, because it is one of the nicer homes in the neighborhood. And as he had also stated too, there are several other carports that probably should be tore down or rebuilt as well. I, I, I wouldn't have, I probably wouldn't have moved there if it wouldn't have been for the way the house looks as it does now. It's a very nice one.
All right, thank you. Any other, any other person's interested in making public comments? Last chance, anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting. As I stated earlier, board members are likely to have questions. I know I'm gonna have some. So I'll remind you, even if we ask you questions from this point forward, I know it's a little uncomfortable, but please return to the microphone so we'll have a clean record if we ask you any additional questions. All right? All right, are there any questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. The original structure in nineteen ninety-three, what was the original construction?
We have some, some photos. We can bring that up. The original structure was a aluminum carport that was put there on the driveway. As you can see right there, flat, kind of a flat roof. Appears to be aluminum.
Okay, and that's the ninety-three?
Correct.
Okay. And I wanna be sure I understand, so even then, that exceeded the setback?
It, it appears that it, it did at that time.
Okay.
The original twenty-five-foot setback.
The, I know that when new construction is done, there is a percentage. Am I correct? When you do new construction, when you initiate new construction, there is, or do reconstruction, remodeling and reconstruction, is, is it true that there is a percentage point where you have to initiate all new permits?
It's
Can you explain that to me?
It's, we don't, we don't look at it in those terms. We look at it, we can allow for repair.
Yes.
And had the permit been picked up, there was notes on the permit that stated that we would allow for repair of it, but not replacing any of the, the main components of the, of the carport structure. So there, there were notes that, like I said, on the application, it said they were gonna repair the carport. They did not say they were gonna replace it. It said repair. And the notes that the plan reviewer had on, on the plan that would have been picked up by the contractor stated minor repairs only allowed on the carport without moving forward, and then we would have had to have a site plan and gone through the, the whole relooking at what the permit was asking for.
Of course, and what they have is certainly not a minor repair.
We have that picture as well. I believe we have
Did you compare? So
So that was
You couldn't compare that and call it a minor repair?
I, I, I just think it's disingenuous to say that they did not replace the structure.
Yes.
Okay, now, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The original structure, was it built before our city ordinance, this went into place? It was kinda grandfathered since it was already there, or what?
I, I can't answer that. Again, Again, reading back through the minutes, obviously, there was a setback requirement because they were asking for a variance. How it was allowed to maintain, that I can't, I can't explain that.
One statement in the applicant's application did state that the structure was there before the 84-15 zoning ordinance, but the structure was not built until 1993. So it was not existing before 1984.
Are we talking about the current structure or the old metal?
The old structure.
The old structure was not built until...
1993.
The, I guess, setback or the survey we were given to show the construction and what was to be added is on a survey from September of 2015 that shows that the setback is there and that the carport would exceed the building line. And it does show that the request was denied in November of 15. If it was denied in November of 15, why did you go ahead and build it after the request was denied? Whoever made the determination to continue building on the... No, it wasn't.
So there was a permit that was issued in March of 2015. The plans were not picked up. And the plan, the work that was applied for on the permit was not complete. So there was a structure that was, this new structure was built, and an inspector went out to the property and stopped the job and denied the inspection because of this structure, because it did not meet the setback requirements. So from April, when that inspection was denied, it took them until October, November to get us the survey that you have in your packets that showed an official denial. But the inspection was done in April, a visual inspection that denied.
You said the permits were never picked up. Is there some kind of limit on the time that they have to be picked up? And they're no longer valid or...
So permits are typically good for 180 days.
Okay.
And...
And then are exceeded that 180? They...
So they started construction. There is also a requirement to keep your stamped construction drawings on site while you're doing work. So obviously, that was violated as well.
Okay.
Mr. Haskell, you, I'm sorry, please. I know it's a pain. I'm sorry. You had indicated that you thought at one time that the, at a meeting, that there may have been some talk of approving the structure, possibly by shortening it. But I've looked, I've looked back at the minutes of the meetings from 1993, 1995, 2015, I believe it was, and a recent one, that all show that it was denied. Do you have any explanation for why the minutes would have been different than your memory?
Well, it's not just my memory, sir. There's other people, neighbors, that were there, and they have the same memory. And I know John, you know, from way back. He worked industrial insurance as a, as an... And he worked with lawyers. He was very cognizant of the laws and what shouldn't, shouldn't be done and what's right and wrong. And, you know, he did, but as far as, you know, so to answer your question, I remember that it was a celebratory kind of thing after the meeting that we could have, keep the carport if we cut it back.
Do you remember which meeting that was, the year or the month?
I remember that it was, what's really sticking out in my memory is the, with the Housing Association and the Civic Improvement Association, I was on the board. And a lot of this came about when we had it built out. And there were, a lot of people were upset with us because we raised the dues, and they basically voted us out. And that's when they went after John with his carport. They came to the city and said, you know, it's dealt too far or whatever. And that's when we had the meeting with the city, and we cut it back after that meeting.
I have one more question. Do you remember the approximate years that the house changed hands? I'd like to know if anybody remembers which owners were owning it at the time?
Well, they left soon thereafter, '95, '96. I can go back and look at my, it was like, maybe it was '96. I don't know. When it's '97, they left, and they moved over behind Johnson Spacecraft Credit Union. Ophelia still lives over there. I went, tried to see her, but she's in her 90s, and she wouldn't come to the door. So I was going to try to get her recollection.
Do you know if the present owner is the same owner that owned the house when this 2015 construction started? Or has it been sold since then?
The present owner, yeah, that's, yeah, the Grubbs, Christine, that's the present owner, but...
So she's had it since 2015, as far as you remember?
Yeah, there's been several owners since then. There was several, at least two that I know of.
Since 2015?
Oh, no, sir. Before that.
Oh, okay.
Between John Robinson.
Right.
And it's gone through, you know, it's been in different ownership.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anybody else have questions? This man?
Well, you were saying it was at one of these meetings that you recall that they did approve. And you said it was in a conversation. But unless I misunderstood, you said after the meeting?
No, it was a meeting here, like, much like this.
Yes, sir.
And I just remember it, we went on with, if we cut it back, it was approved. It was going to be allowed if it would cut back so many feet.
Yes, sir.
Now, that's my recollection. And that's Carolyn's recollection. She lives next door to me, Carol Reeves. She lives, that's her recollection.
Let's just hear from yours, please. She's not here.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Go ahead. I have some questions for you anyway.
Before he testifies, he denied swearing in at the beginning.
Generally, an attorney is considered a...
But he should be sworn in.
Well, respectfully, I don't think I could be sworn in as an attorney because I'm here as a representative, not making my own testimony.
You're getting ready to make...
Well, he doesn't offer, anything he says is not offering evidence. It's only argument. Okay? So, as I understand it, your client that's made the application is the same owner that owned the property when we started this 2015 construction?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. I think what some of the confusion was is between 1993 and her purchasing the property, between 1993 and 2015, there's been a couple of owners in between.
Right. You had argued earlier that the structures look the same, and it's been here for 25 years. But the structure we're looking at now is not the same one that was voted on back in the 90s.
It is the same structure. It is a carport structure. It is not a different structural being. It is also not an enlargement. I would ask the board to look at Section 6 of the... I'm sorry, please allow me to finish my comments.
Go ahead.
If you look at Section 6 of the ordinance, nonconforming structures, you are allowed to modify these structures. What you cannot do is enlarge it. And I think that's where we need to focus on here. Is this an enlargement of that same structure or not?
Of an approved structure.
Of whatever structure was there. And so then here, okay, so then I asked the board. If the board is saying that this structure was denied back in '93 and '95 and should have never existed in the first place. So then I think then, the city has allowed this to go on for 25 years. And so I think respectfully, the city has a potential issue that they allowed a structure to be nonconforming for 25 years, which the ordinance itself allows for nonconforming structures. There's that exception. And like I said, if you look at Section 6, nonconforming structures, she did not enlarge it. You are allowed to modify. It's not an enlargement. If the board, I'm sorry, if the city allowed the structure to stay there for 25 years, go through subsequent owners, and never had it torn down, never had it cited, never caused it to come into question beforehand, I think that's an issue because Ms. Otterbert, as a bona fide purchaser, decades later, the purchasers in between had this structure there. There's going to be an issue. The city also collected taxes.
Well, that's an issue you can bring up later. We're looking at this structure, not the structure from the 90s.
This is the same structure.
It is not the same structure. That's ridiculous. Okay. Anyone else have questions?
I'm sorry, sir. You have not allowed me to finish. You want to cut me off?
We are asking you questions, okay? You've had your chance to speak, and you made your presentation.
If you're not allowing me to answer...
And you're out of order, sir.
If you're not allowing me to answer the questions, then you are not doing a genuine service to the public.
Is your argument that this structure is the same structure, identical structure that was not approved twice in the 90s?
My statement is not going to be that when you are wording the question presupposing the answer. You're not being fair. It's very clear you've already made up your mind without giving this a fair shot here.
It's a simple question as a yes or no answer.
No, it's not actually, because you are having several suppositions within that question.
What suppositions are they?
That it was a nonconforming structure. That it was past the setbacks.
We have three votes that says it was a nonconforming structure.
Is it a past the setbacks? Is it a new structure that enlarges the previous structure there? Have you considered that? Is there an enlargement? There's been no testimony, no presentation that it is an enlargement of the previous...
If your argument is it's the same structure, why are you asking for another variance that's already been turned down three times?
Well, if you would like to explore that with your city's legal department, we can certainly do that.
I'm asking you. This is your opportunity to respond.
We would like to give the opportunity to the city to do what's right by Ms. Otterbert, to do what's right by the members of the public who have come to testify.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir. Was that comment?
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions?
It's fine. We're giving this opportunity. But if we need to deal with it in court, then we will certainly deal with it in court.
Well, that's your option. Mr. Dyer asked you to go ahead and respond, so go ahead.
To what question, sir?
You said that it would be fair, and I'm trying very hard to be fair. Oh, I'm sorry. Trying very hard to be fair. I want to give you every opportunity to be fair. I truly do. I'm having a great deal of difficulty calling these two structures the same.
Are they both carports?
They may be carports, but they are not the same structure.
Second question is, is this an enlargement of the previous carport? That's what the ordinance says. You can modify. Is this an enlargement?
This isn't a modification.
Is it? No. You can do basically whatever you want to the structure, as long as it's not an enlargement. So the question is, under the code, is this an enlargement? I've asked the code to be looked at. It says it right there. Is this an enlargement? Has the city presented anything showing that this is an enlargement?
That photo right there looks about twice as big as the previous one. It looks like an enlargement to me.
It looks a whole lot larger than the previous carport.
We do have more slides.
I'd like, I would like to review the slides with you there, with you and I both looking at them. May we do that? Let's look at the previous carport.
Before we go any further, can I pose a question? I'd like to get something clarified as we're looking at the slides.
Go ahead.
You'll have to forgive me. As you can see, I wear glasses, so sometimes it's a little bit difficult for me to get some depth perception. But as I look at the two structures, and I look at the, at the roof, and I look at the supporting posts on either side, they don't look the same size to me. So I guess my question to you is, the actual physical building material that we see in today's carport, how much, if any, of that actual building material, wood, composite, concrete, et cetera, how much of that existed on this original carport in the slide we're looking at now? I believe respectfully, it's vastly new material. Because to allow for proper structure of construction for safety, it is new material. So none of this original material exists? I do not believe so. I can't say what the builder exactly may have reused portions of it, but it is mostly new material. But the postings itself are the same spots. The roof, you are correct that the roof is a slightly pitched roof as opposed to a flat one. But once again, under the enlargement, it would not be in violation of the ordinance unless it went above, I believe it was 40 feet or approximately four stories. So having a roof pitch to match the rest of the household is not an enlargement that violates the spirit of the ordinance. Moreover, the posts are in the same spot. So I would ask, pictures can be quite deceiving. Our glasses as well, anyone. Pictures are not from the same angle, same photographer, same height. To say that from a picture alone, you can judge the size of a structure, it's not unless you want to start taking measurements of, we know, for example, license plate measures eight and a half inches tall, so then you can extrapolate the rest of the height of everything that's in the picture.
I'd like to look at the rest of them.
Before we get away from this picture, it's pretty clear to me that the old structure was completely demolished to make room for the new one? I meant the question. Yours?
I believe most of it was taken down.
No, no, I mean, I mean, okay.
I was not there for construction, so I can't tell you for certain if it was 100% removed or 90%.
So this is a rebuild, a new build?
It's a remodel.
It's a new build. The old one was completely torn down.
I'd just say that's a bit of semantics as for new build versus rebuild.
I'm trying to, I'm going to use this post box and the curb and the driveway to help us both, I gain some perspective. You said we don't have anything, you know, for perspective. We can use the street, the curb, and the driveway to help us gain some depth and perspective. And the post box, it looks to be approximately the same post box. So if you, now you can go ahead and advance it, if you would. It's a different angle, but it's the same post box, same curb, same driveway, same street. And as you pointed out, the pitch of the roof is considered, looks like a 10, 12 pitch, maybe.
The posts are in the same spot.
Beautifully built, but the question is, I mean, they're not the same.
The posts are in the same spot. There is no encroachment, or there's no built out towards the street any further. I mean, if you want to use these pictures as a guide, because there are no measurements of the previous one and the current one.
You had stated earlier that this has been sitting there for 25 years with no protest or action taken by the city. But I thought that the city had issued citations. When was the first city citation issued?
All these citations, sir, were all, all 36 citations were issued, I believe, within the past year and a half to Ms. Otterbert. No prior owner was ever cited. No prior owner was ever challenged, that we could gather from the record. No prior owner was ever requested to tear it down, modify, or do anything, sir.
The first citation was issued September 28th of 2016 for having an illegal structure that's been denied and not removed. Those structure, or those citations can be issued daily. We chose to try and work with the owner to see if we could work that out.
But for 25 years, sir, no citations were issued until Ms. Grubbs.
No citations were issued on the old structure. All the citations were issued when the new structure was built or was being applied to be built.
Additionally, those citations were part of the noncompliance because this has never had any sort of inspections past April 2nd of 2015.
Did the city consider this a new structure or a modern modification?
Again, when the permit application was applied for, it said it was going to repair the carport. We put notes specifically saying minor repairs only before we go into having to worry about a site plan and meeting setbacks. We put notes specifically saying minor repairs only before we go into having to worry about a site plan and, and meeting setbacks. So, yes, we consider this a new, new structure.
I'd like to just briefly point out that we requested those permit records from the city. And to now be told that they were, they exist and that they have notes on them, we were told they don't exist and there are no notes. We were not provided anything with any notes on them.
This was the application, you requested the permit, you didn't request the application.
Alright, well regardless today, it's the day for the hearing, uh, and we can only consider what is before us. What I'm looking at is an older structure that was turned down at least twice in the nineties, was completely rebuilt in twenty fifteen, has been denied since then and citations have issued, uh, since then. That seems to be the facts of what we're looking at that I can see. Anyone else have questions or comments? Alright, um, first then, let's look at the request, um, for a variance. Do I hear a motion that we, um, find the necessary prerequisites for a variance, that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, that there are special conditions peculiar to the property involve little enforcement of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship to the property owner, the grant of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, the grant of the variance will ensure that substantial justice, uh, be done and that it, uh, the request for variance should be approved.
Offer a motion to approve a variance at five oh five, Brandy Wayne.
Alright, all in favor, uh, please, uh, say aye and indicate by raising your right hand so it can be, uh, picked up by the camera. All opposed, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Alright, the, uh, request for a variance fails, zero votes for, five against. Next agenda item is the request for a special exception on the same property. I hear a motion that the granting of a special exception, uh, is a very small exception to the ordinance, that the granting of the exception would be within the spirit of the ordinance and the granting of an exception will provide an overriding benefit to the applicant with no detriment to the surrounding neighbors or city, uh, and that the special exception should be approved.
Motion to approve special exception at five oh five, Brandy Wayne.
Okay. Second, uh, all in favor, uh, say aye, raise your right hand. All opposed, uh, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
The request for special exception fails, zero votes for and five against. Alright, our next agenda item is consideration and possible action regarding approval of minutes from the March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, special meeting.
Second.
All in favor, indicate, aye, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, alright, the minutes are approved from March twenty-seventh. Next agi- agenda item is comments from board members. Anyone have any public comments they wish to make? Alright, none being heard, we'll move to, uh, item number six, council liaison report, I believe we have a new council liaison, is that correct? So, alright, you're just observing, we don't actually have a new liaison yet, is that correct?
Are you going to be the new liaison?
Okay. Okay. You don't have anything to add, I suppose then?
No, uh, the mayor called me and asked me to come.
Alright, um, alright, I hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Unanimous, we are adjourned.